Okay, so a comment, a question about Khan Academy reading. I've talked about this previously in previous live streams and in other videos and such. My thoughts on Khan Academy reading. And so the problem with reading practice, that's anything other than official SAT stuff from the college board, is it's really hard to get official reading material to be good. It's really hard to get practice reading material to be good, to meet the quality of official questions for all kinds of reasons which I won't go into. Now technically Khan Academy, they claim is working with the college board to make sure their questions are good, I guess. But I'm not super convinced actually that they're probably working with them, but it's not with the same degree of intensity that the college board works on their tests and their questions. I mean, the college board, when they may create an SAT, that goes through a very rigorous process to vet every question. And I guarantee you, they're not doing that for Khan Academy questions. So even if they were working with them closely, the quality is not going to be still at that level. And just from what I've seen in the practice questions for reading, it's just, it falls into the same kind of problems that other prep books run into when it comes to reading questions. And it's no fault of their own. It's just really hard to do. It requires a lot of time and effort and vetting of the questions, which really no one but the college board, who has the time and money to do that, can really do. So if you want to practice reading, I don't recommend using Khan Academy. If you can avoid it, stick with at first real tests. Then if you run out of real tests, I actually do recommend using old SAT reading. You can skip the vocabulary questions, the sentence completions, of course. But you can also use the old SAT reading as, I think, a good substitute. If you run out of those, or you don't like that, or whatever, then I guess, you know, Khan Academy reading is fine. Any third-party material is fine, but you're not going to get anything as good as you'll get from the college board. So try to stick with them as much as possible. I have a whole video on this on YouTube called, "What to Do When You Run Out of Tests," basically, for the SAT. And I go through this in more detail. So if you want to check out that video, you can. Oh, and as a side note, Khan Academy math and writing is fine. That's good for practice. It's just the reading. It's just hard to do. Really, no one can do it well, except for the college board. And this also applies for the ACT as well. ACT reading, much better to get practice sections out of real tests than anything third-party created. Next question is dual history passages. Oof, yeah. So history passages, I've talked quite a bit about this, I think the last livestream in particular. Then when you add dual history passages on top of it, it gets super tricky. So these are the passages where you've got passage one and passage two, and they're both from the 19th century or the 18th century. And yeah, so not only do you have to work through the hard language of the history passage, which you've discussed before, really hard to do, but then you've got two of them, you have to compare and contrast them, and it's a big challenge. The most important thing for any dual passage, but especially for the dual history passage, is to get the relationship between the passages. This is critical. So we need to know, do these passages have an opposite relationship? Do they disagree? That's often how it's going to be, especially in a lot of the practice SATs that they've released, so far at least. The dual passages have been opposed. They've been on two sides of the same issue. So do they, are they opposed? Do they disagree? Are they on the same side? Do they agree? Considerably rarer to see this, but it can happen. So two issue, two people writing about an issue upon which they mostly agree. They may have some minor disagreements, but the key is, do they agree about it? Overall. And then very rarely, I don't really think you'll see this anymore. This was more of like an old SAT type thing, but I'll include it just in case they bring it back. So no relationship. Sometimes you'll have two passages that maybe speak on the same topic, but they don't necessarily agree or disagree. They're just maybe approaching the topic in different ways with different methods. So there'd be no relationship in that case. So it's really important to know the relationship between these. And to do that, you need to understand, of course, the main arguments of each passage. And that's often where the difficulty comes in, right? So it's one thing to understand the relationship between them, but of course, to do that, you need to understand what the passages are even saying in the first place. So presenting main arguments is really key to understanding the relationship between these passages. And that's going to be important to understanding questions that relate to both passages, especially those that say, ask, what is the relationship between the passage, or whatever. I think what I'm going to have to do is go through one day and maybe in a livestream, start it with the, for the first 10 or 15 minutes, doing like a little mini lesson, and work through a reading of a dual history passage, so you can see how we analyze it, how we break it down. Because honestly, it's really hard to speak in generalities about it. Each passage is different. The language is different. The arguments are different. It really comes into just seeing practices. So I think what I'm going to do in a future session, maybe sometimes this week, I'll do another practice dual history passage. And at least a reading of it, so you can see how that process might work. But yeah, it's tough. It's tough for everybody. Native speakers, non-native speakers alike. So this is from test five. You may not want to watch this if you haven't done it, as I said, because it's from a test and it might be just good practice to do it on your own. But if you have done this one, or if you don't care, then you can watch. Otherwise, you might want to turn away or not pay attention for a little bit. So let's try this one out. And so there's a couple of questions attached to this email. How to understand this question by breaking it down? We'll definitely go through that. And are there different methods to solve this question? Maybe. Let's see what happens. Alan drives an average of 100 miles each week. His car can travel an average of 25 miles per gallon of gasoline. Alan would like to reduce his weekly expenditure on gasoline by $5, assuming gasoline costs $4 per gallon. Which equation can Alan use to determine how many fewer average miles m he should drive each week? So this question looks like a question where you have to set up an equation. And I suppose there's a way to do that kind of almost more algebraically, but really the way I see this question, and you see this a lot with problems involving miles per gallon, miles, gallons of gasoline, cost, is this is really a unit conversion problem. So essentially, he wants to save $5. And if gas costs $4 per gallon, we want to know how many fewer miles he would have to drive in order to save that amount of money. So you can kind of see the chain of conversions. There's going to be m miles, he's going to drive fewer. If he drives m fewer miles, he's going to use less gas. And if he uses less gas, he's going to pay less money for the gas that he didn't use, right, that he saved on. So there's a chain of conversions. And so what I recommend for unit conversion, instead of trying to think it through in your head, is to actually pull something, a tool out from chemistry, if you've done chemistry before. It's called dimensional analysis. And if you haven't done chemistry, I teach this in my courses. And I'm also going to show it to you right here, so you'll get a sense of how this works. So what we're going to do is we're going to convert m, let's see, which way do we do it? Would we convert 5 into m or m into 5? Let's see. Yeah, so we're going to convert $5. We want to see basically how many miles are there in $5. And what that's going to equal is that's going to equal m. That's going to equal the miles we're saving. So essentially, could I convert $5 into m? So how will we do this? Well, we're going to start with $5. And then we do our first conversion. And what I want to do is convert this into gallons of gasoline. How many gallons of gas do I get out of $5? And the trick is, whatever unit is on top, you're going to put on bottom, because what that's going to do is cancel the units. And the unit on top is going to be, in this case, gallons, because I'm converting from dollars to gallons. And I know from the problem that it's $4 per gallon, so I'm going to put that as my conversion. Next, I'm going to convert gallons to miles. So if he's going to save this amount of gallons, how many miles would that be equivalent to? So again, I'm going to put this unit on the bottom. I'm going to put miles on top. And in the problem, I'm told the conversion is 25 miles per gallon. So 1 gallon, 25 miles. And so through this process, dollars cancel, gallons cancel, what I'm left with is a value with the unit of miles. So whatever this ends up equaling, this is going to equal m. That's going to be the number of miles he's going to drive fewer, fewer miles he's going to drive, so that he saves this $5. So what am I going to get? I'm going to get 5 over 4 times 25 is equal to m. Now, this is pretty close to one of the answers. I'm just going to do a little bit of a rearrangement here. So I'm going to multiply both sides by 4 fifths. And I'm going to get 4 fifths m equals 25. And 4 fifths... Oh, okay, that doesn't even match into them either, either. So let's go back, because I need to have, it looks like 25 on one side. So let's go here. So instead, I'm going to multiply both sides by 4 over 25. That will cancel these. And I'm left with 5 is equal to 4 over 25 m. And that looks like it's choice D, and that's the answer. So that is the unit conversion way of doing this, which I like. It seems to make sense to me. There might be other ways to do it, which I'll think about in a second. You could also convert it from m. Start with m miles, convert m miles into dollars. And then that should equal 5. I mean, it's the same method essentially as this. You're just flipping the order of everything. So you could do that. Yeah, I mean, you could also just, this is all kind of the same, but you can say, what would I have to do to m to turn it into $5? Cheating a little bit, looking at the choices. What would I have to do to m to convert that into $5? And then again, you could do something related to these conversions, but that, that to me is super unintuitive. I don't like that. So this method of dimensional analysis, factor label method sometimes is called, helps organize your conversions one step to the next. And from that, you can get an equation. You also could just kind of ignore the m. Actually calculate what m would equal. Get a number for m, because we can do that. When we actually calculate this value, we're going to get, it looks like 125 over 4, I think. Get a value for m and then see which one of these equations gives you that same value. So if you wanted to actually find the value of that, you could go to the choices and see which one's consistent, once you find that m. And you will see that it's going to be D in that case. So that's another way to do it. Pretty tricky though, for sure. Should I read the passage in the SAT writing section between two language questions that don't ask about the main idea? Because when I read the writing passages, that helps me in solving some question, but it wastes a lot of time. So the gist of this is, do I have to read the entire writing passage, especially if there's a big gap between questions? My thing about this is it's going to be dependent on your strength in the section and how well you're doing on others. Basically, I, when I do this, I say, no, I don't. So I'm basically skipping from question to question. When I need to, I will go back and read if necessary. That's basically the position I take. I'm on notice that I'm going to have to go back and read, but most of the time, you're not going to need to, because most of the time, the answers to these questions are at most found within the paragraph you're reading. So reading like everything is not necessarily important. Let me actually pull out a reading test here. Let's just grab this one. And let me actually look at a passage and I'll kind of show you what I would do in terms of reading everything. Because you're right, if you're able to not read everything, that saves you some time. And I think you can get away with it in the writing section. Honestly, these passages are so short, unlike the ACT. This comes up, I think, more on the ACT than it does on the SAT. Because on the ACT, the passages in the writing section are bigger and you get a lot more gaps. So like I said, I'm typically going to jump around here. I'm not going to read every single word. So clearly, to answer 23, I would probably read, depends on the question for 23, 23... Okay, so 23. The question is, what choice is the best introduction to the paragraph? So I probably would skip this. I would do 24 and 25 first as I'm doing that reading through the paragraph, and then I'm ready to do 23. So I might jump around it like that, but I would read the entire paragraph here. Then I would definitely read the paragraph here, 26, 27, 28, 29. Here is kind of what you're talking about. Now, this question is one of these opening word questions, where you have to find which word is best to start the sentence. With those, you need to read a little bit more than just the sentence. So I probably would read the whole paragraph, to be honest. And then read the whole thing. So yeah, I think really, in practice, you're going to be reading basically everything. But if you can find moments where you can skip and save a little bit of time, because it's not going to ask questions about it. Because sometimes you'll get actually like a whole paragraph that has no questions underlined. I think most of the time, you can skip it. You'll be okay. And if you need to, if it turns out you need to read that, just go back and read it later. But it's not going to affect that many questions. How much time should I spend each day to improve my ACT scores? So I'm going to give a range, because it depends. Let me copy and paste this. It's going to depend on kind of where you're at, how much time you have until the test, that kind of thing. But I can give a range. I can give you some suggestions. Now, actually go more into detail about this in my ACT study plan. For those of you who haven't joined my site, I've got a free course on ACT study plans. So again, it depends on your timeline. If you have, I forget exactly the breakdown I had for this, but this is approximate. If you've got more than six months until your next test, so if you're preparing early, and let me actually get my actual breakdowns, just so I'm consistent with myself, because that would be confusing if I'm not. But long story short, if you're starting early in this process, you've got more than six months to your next test, then you can afford to take it easy. You don't have to cram. So what it's going to look like is... So I had it written on this as four months or more. Okay, so I'm going to change this to four months. So if you have more than four months until your next test, so again, if you're starting early, then I recommend 30 minutes per day on average, four days per week. Now occasionally, maybe once per month with this kind of schedule, you'd want to do a full test. And then maybe a little bit more frequency with the full tests as you get closer. But never really more than once every two weeks. One of the big mistakes students make is just practice test after practice test after practice test. And there's a lot of issues with that. I talk about this in my study plan videos. You want to do a lot more review and learning. And the tests are really there to improve your stamina and give you a data point. But you really shouldn't be learning through tests. You should be learning through practice sections, through books, through courses, through tutoring, whatever you're doing. That should be the majority of your stuff. But if you've got more than four months, 30 minutes per day, four days per week, that's a good pace. Just be consistent. If you have less than three months, then I recommend you to do one hour per day, five days per week. And here's the thing, this applies through the whole cycle. So if you start with greater than four months to go, you can do this through the entire run-up to your test. Maybe study a little bit more as the test gets closer. But the benefit of studying early is you don't have to study at this pace later. This is, this is literally if you start at these points, this is what you should be doing through the whole study plan. If you have less than one month, so if you're like, starting with not much time left, then I recommend 1.5 hours per day, six days per week. Now again, these are just suggestions. And everyone's got different schedules. Everyone's got different, you know, things that they need to do. And these are averages. Some days you may study a little bit more. Some days you may study less. But the key thing tying all this together is consistency. So if you're in the situation where Monday through Friday, you've got school, you've got sports, you've got extracurriculars, you've got whatever. And so you don't get any SAT or ACT studying done, but then on Saturday or on Sunday, you study for five hours. That is not going to be as consist, that's not going to be as effective as studying a little bit, even a half hour each of those days through the week. Building that consistent habit, cramming, even like kind of long-term cramming, just doing a lot of studying on one day, that's not going to get you the learning that you need. Certainly occasionally, you'll have to do like a four-hour test, and yeah, fine. But you should be spreading out the studying over many days. And you know, half hour, an hour, consistency is the key. So if you do that, you're going to be, especially long-term, in a really good position to do well. Who versus whom? Okay, so very specific grammar topic, so I'll definitely talk about this. Who versus whom? So something you'll see on both the SAT and the ACT, more of the ACT, but definitely good to know if you're doing both tests. So when do you use which? When do you use, well, when do you use who? When do you use whom? So who is going to be used when you're referring to subjects, so particularly doers of action. Whereas whom, you're going to use when you're referring to objects. In other words, targets of action. So let's go through some examples, because that's really the best way to do it. I sent out a letter to the people who volunteered for tomorrow's party. So the question is, is this correct? Is it who? Or should it be whom? And here's how you decide. First thing you do is you look at who and you ask, whom is who referring to? To whom? And it's referring to the people, right? The people who volunteered for the party. And then you ask yourself, okay, were the people the doers of this action? Were they the ones who volunteered? Or were they the targets of the action? Were, did someone volunteer them? And in this case, they're the ones who volunteered. They are the subjects. They are the people who did this action. They're the ones who volunteered. Therefore, we use who. I sent out a letter to the people who we invited to the party. So again, we ask, who? Here's our word, to whom does it refer? It refers to, again, the people. What's the action? Well, these people were invited to the party, right? The people who we invited to the party. So these people are the target of the action. They are the target of the inviting. They are the object of that action. Therefore, this should actually be whom, because they're objects. And that's how you tell. So you ask yourself the question, are the people or things or whatever that that who or whom refers to subjects or objects? Are they doers of that action? Or are they objects, targets of it? And that tells you whether you use who or whom. I've got more stuff on this in the ACT English Bootcamp mostly. And I think a little bit in the SAT writing course, so send some examples from tests, especially on the ACT. How to figure out the things that I am doing wrong? They basically keep getting the same score without improving much. So it depends on the section. So basically, the gist of the question is, you know, my score's not changing much. My score's not improving. What do I do in that situation? So it's really hard to say generally, because you're in that situation where, until we can answer the question, what are you getting wrong consistently? Why? Are there concepts or formulas or something that you don't know? Is it reading questions you're getting wrong consistently? Is it an issue of vocabulary? Is it an issue of reading comprehension? Until we know exactly what the errors are, if there are any consistent errors, it's hard to really answer that question. So again, like I said, for the previous question, it's first figuring that out. And the challenge with all of this is sometimes it's, a lot of times, it's really hard, if you're learning something, it's really hard to know what mistakes you're making, because you're learning it, right? How is somebody who's learning something supposed to know what they don't know? Right? That's the challenge. And that's where teachers come in, right? Teachers, tutors, friends, any outside voice to be able to give you some insight into what you're doing. Because it's very difficult for us with our blind spots and also just our, our lack of knowledge in the first place. We're learners, to identify that for ourselves. So the main thing I would say in your situation is, if you have a tutor or a teacher, ask them. But if you don't, that's not an option. If you know of a friend that you can work with on this, if you're part of my study group, you can do this as well on Facebook. Get some outside perspective as much as you can, because it's really hard to do it yourself. Now, sometimes you can. Sometimes it's pretty obvious. It's like, yeah, every time I see an exponent question, I get it wrong. Well, in that case, the answer is clear. And then you have to pursue resources to target that and improve that. But getting that outside feedback will help. I will also say, as a general point, reading, reading score can be really hard to budge sometimes, because again, reading is, the reading score is based on a skill that you've built up over your entire educational career, your skill of reading. And it would be like saying, it'd be like saying this, this is kind of a silly analogy, but it captures the point. It'd be like saying, okay, how do I compete at college-level baseball if I've only played baseball like six times in my life? And I have a month. Can you, can you, can you tell me what to do? It's like an impossible-to-answer question, right? It's actually probably an impossible-to-do question. Now, it's not at that extreme in reading, but the same idea applies. It's like one or two things in reading, it's just hard to make a move. It depends on the situation, but it's just hard to get movement over a really short period of time. Over a long term, you can. So the main thing is, you have to have that long-term perspective. If you've been studying for a week or two weeks, not the person who answered this question, but in general, if you're somebody who's been studying for one or two or three weeks and nothing's really moving, that's not really, doesn't mean anything, because that's such a short period of time. So keep up the work, keep up the habits, and over time, it'll come. What type of math is going to be on the SAT? So someone already followed up that a big chunk of the test is linear equations. Let me give you the the top five most important topics that you should be comfortable with for SAT math. And this is totally rough, and it's just off the top of my head, but it's a good place to start. There's more than this, but these are probably the five most important things. First thing would be linear equations. Absolutely. So we're talking y equals mx plus b. Finding slopes, y-intercepts, the properties of lines, all that stuff, really important. Second would be word problems. And the tactics for solving them. In particular, plugging in and translating. So plugging in meaning taking numbers, either your own numbers or numbers from the choices, plugging them into the problem and kind of avoiding algebra. Or if you're going to do it the algebraic way, knowing the ways to translate words into equations or expressions, which you can then solve. So that's huge, big chunk of things. What else? Anything to do with quadratics? And factoring, very important. So quadratic formula, factoring quadratics, vertex form, graphing them, ax squared plus bx plus c, x's of symmetry, discriminant, things like that, right? Algebra I slash Algebra II stuff you've probably learned in terms of factoring, solving, finding solutions, x-intercepts, y-intercepts, right? Nothing, nothing groundbreaking. This isn't calculus. This is stuff that you certainly have done if you're in at least like 10th or 11th grade. And yeah, so definitely important to know that. What else? Percent, huge, huge. Percent and percent change, absolutely critical. Not only because it's all over the test, but also because you probably haven't done anything with percents or percent change in a really long time, maybe middle school. So it just takes a while to remember how all that stuff works and remember the approaches, learn how to translate, learn how to do percent change, all this stuff. And what would be my fifth topic of importance? Pretty, pretty steep drop-off at this point. You can kind of add fractions in here. That's kind of part of it. Fractions. And then like, yeah, surveys and scatter plots, I guess, would be another one. So how are surveys constructed? What counts as a good survey? What can you conclude from surveys? In terms of experimental design, what are scatter plots? What are best-fit lines? How do they relate to the data points? All that kind of stuff you might have learned in like a beginning statistics-type class, or maybe Algebra II sometimes does a little statistics, would be pretty good as well. So those are the top five topics. There's more, but those are ones you definitely want to have a really good handle on. And as a little plug, I have an SAT math course, which covers everything on this list and more. So I cover all these topics, practice questions. We go through seven real tests, question by question. You see exactly how to solve all the questions. So SAT math course, go to ReasonPrep.com and you'll learn more about it there. Go to the courses section of the site and you'll find out more info. So those would be my top five topics. Top five topics for ACT math. So someone followed up with this. So yeah, let's, let's be ecumenical here and so top five ACT math topics. So here's the thing with ACT math compared to SAT math, and here's a difference between the tests. ACT math is much broader. There's many more topics covered on ACT math than SAT math. It's not even close. There's overlap, but there are a lot of things on ACT math that are either, that get more emphasis on ACT math or don't even appear on the SAT. So it's a little bit harder to come out with a list, because it's a different type of test, but I will give you, you know, the five topics that I think are are pretty important to know. And especially one of them is plane geometry. Especially circles and triangles all over the place on the ACT. So in fact, you know what I'm going to do? Let's let's make those two separate categories, because they're, they're both pretty big and they're pretty important. So let's do circles and triangles. Absolutely important for ACT math. Area, perimeter, circumference, isosceles, equilateral, Pythagorean theorem, similar triangles, Sokaltoa trigonometry, all that stuff, very important for ACT math. What else would we say is important? I mean, again, there's so many topics, it's hard to really nail. It's really like on the SAT, you're going to see the same topics repeated two or three or four times. On the ACT, it's like each test has like one or two questions from each topic. So it's, it's, it's harder to get like a best-of list compared to the SAT. Yeah, I would say factoring would be a big one. So factoring quadratics, et cetera. So factoring, solving quadratics, just like on the SAT, that's pretty big. Plugging in, especially answers, is very, a very useful tactic. So there's many ACT questions which you can solve by plugging in the choices into the question and seeing which one works. So knowing when you should plug in the answers, when, how to do that, the best way to approach it, to avoid algebra, can save you a lot of effort. What would be number five? Yeah, I'd say fractions and percents, just because it's stuff that you just haven't done very often recently, probably. So making sure you're really solid on fractions and percents, just like with SAT, is pretty important. So I would say, those would be the top So I would say those would be the top five. Again, uh, the. Uh, if you want to learn more about all these, I've got an ACT math bootcamp course on recentprep.com. I cover all these topics. Uh, practice questions, we go through. In the ACT math bootcamp, five tests. And then throughout the entire ACT math courses that I have on my site, I go through 13. Complete ACT math tests, question by question. So you've got plenty of review of all these topics in all those videos. So if you want to learn more about that, check out that course. Any tips for breaking down or understanding complicated passages on the reading part? So again, one that. Depends a lot on the passage because every passage is different. So one thing that might help with one passage may not be very helpful for another. We repeat some of what I've said earlier about this, not today, but just in general, because it's really the same kind of advice plot applies to these. So the first thing would be. Focus on questions. Let the questions do the work for you in the sense of telling you what's important and what's not. The danger of kind of worrying about. Understanding complicated passages, the possible danger is spending time trying to understand something that they don't ask a question about. What's if, for example, the first paragraph? If the first paragraph is 15 lines long and there are somehow no questions about that first paragraph. Potentially trying to fully understand that first paragraph may not be a good use of your time. Certainly if there's a, a general question that covers the passage as a whole, maybe. Somewhat understanding that first paragraph might matter. But again, the focus should be on what questions do they ask and answer those questions? Rather than. Going into the passage, assuming we need to understand every single word and then go to the questions. Let the questions be the guide for you. Let them tell you what is. Important and what's not, what you should understand and what's not. And then when they give a question, you can know, okay, if there's a question about lines nine to 13, let me focus in on that a lot more. Beyond that, again, it depends on the passage, what might be some other things we could do for breaking down the passages? Part of it is, and this, uh, goes with focusing on the questions. Is read the essay when you're going through the questions, read the passages paragraph by paragraph. You should be doing that naturally as you're working through the questions. This is the strategy that I teach. As you're working through the questions, you're reading through the passage simultaneously. And how it usually works out is you're basically reading a paragraph at a time. And what that helps you do is. Chunk it down naturally. Because the big danger, and again, I, I, everyone's got their different approaches, different strategies. And if something's working for you, I don't want to tell you to change it. But if you don't have a strategy that works for you for reading, and this applies to some extent for the ACT reading as well. I don't recommend. Opening up the test booklet, starting from line one, reading all the way to line 80 and then going to questions. For all different kinds of reasons, which I won't go into now. That's not the best way to approach things. Instead you go to the questions, you find the first specific question you can. You read until you can answer that one. Then move on to the next specific, read until you can answer that one. So you're reading in chunks and that can help you break down the passage rather than kind of. Reading this whole monstrous beast and trying to understand the whole thing at once. That's really hard to do. So those would be two tips I would give, focus on questions and in focusing on questions, read the paragraph, read the passage in paragraph chunks. That can make a big difference in, in turning a complicated passage into, to manageable tasks. Beyond that, it gets down into like, you know, reading comprehension, sentence structure, argumentation of the passage. It's more complicated once you get into the nitty gritty of it, but as an overall bird's eye view, this would be a good place to start. Okay, uh, maybe one or two more questions. What is your passage strategy? Please show us a flow chart. So I don't have like a flow chart I can just show you immediately, but I can. I kind of ran it through it a little bit. So this will be, I assume you mean for SAT reading. And I go into more detail about this. Plugging alert. That I go into more detail about this in my reading course, but let me give you the general outlines of what this looks like. Step one. Read the blurb.